To order November tenth. I think we have Chris Alney, Gordon Brewster, Sue Philbrick, Sarah Creighton, Peter Morton and Brian Fry. And Mark is supposed to join us by Zoom. I don't see him yet. First order of agenda is any public comment. There are items that are not on the agenda. And in order to make a comment, you're gonna have to raise your hand so I can then actually unmute you. I don't see Jim and Jane here. Any comments not of items not on the agenda? Okay. The next item is the continuing review of downtown zoning. Town Center and Harbors Edge District by law. And I thought what we would do is start. Hi, Mark. Okay. Hi. It may jump back to muting you. I don't know when the house can work. Okay. So I thought we would start. We have two groups for the site walk on Saturday. Um, I thought we had pretty decent attendance. And we had two scribes or people taking notes. Um, I had some notes as well, but maybe Gordon and were you the scribe?
I have a couple of secrets.
Yeah, and then also just general comments about what we heard.
Want to just go through them?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right, so I was on a call at Group A, why not? Okay, so I, I think that the, this, this, some of these are my observations and all the ones are specific questions. So I think that the general tone throughout the whole couple hours. But the, there was general agreement on the newly on the, on the understanding of the approach and what we were intending to do. And in both zones, you know, whether they agreed with it or not, there was lots of discussion back and forth. But generally, there was a good understanding of what we intended to do. And that one thing I thought was a really good one. When we went over to one school street and we looked at all those renovated buildings right there. And using those as a good example of what the intention of this is. I think it was general agreement that that's a good idea. That probably reinforced what they were thinking. As far as specific, specific question, these are, I'm not gonna go through what we talked about, because basically it's, it's all of the zoning. But these are the specific questions that came up. On the Elm Street area here, there was a suggestion made, can the front yard, the front yard setback be increased, maybe the back rear yards are very, around the pond because of flooding? Have that a specific, specific request for that? Make good sense? This is, this is one that actually appeared a bunch of different times. Can the zero lot line setback be increased to provide more open space and trees? And not create a dark building corridor at the zero lot line right down since the facade? Did not like the zero lot line approach. That was just one person, but it came about as we started to go down and made turn and looking downtown. Where the, where the buildings were no longer on the zero line, it was residential. Uh, where new, where did new prospective residents park? Should, should people actually take us up on this and actually build more residence? Where do they park? This is a repeating theme that happened all over the place. Um, one was, this is an interesting one. They wanted to make the new developments by right, by right and have more oversight on these aside of what that, what that might be. And I think Sarah actually answered that question. And that we have, uh, we have a design oversight. And if it's in the CHOD, then it has that, this is historical, this is good that. But that was a good question, one that I, that I personally needed officially answer to.
They wanted the special permit oversight for everything.
That's right, let me write that down. Uh, parking a concern was again everywhere and no matter what we talked about, this parking was raised. And this is a good one. Is structured parking a possibility? And that, that, that was right at the end of the, the discussion and that it kind of flew off into a whole different conversation. Where they might be, what it might be, who it might be for and da, 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 da. So I don't know. Oh, is there an overlap between, between design review for the new zoning, the JOD and historic? So that was more a design review. Uh, concern over the zero lot line. Will there be an economic oversight of the effects of the new zoning? Now is an interesting question. Something that you had to do when you did the, um, BTA, you had to have an economic analysis, what the intended impact was. So one of the question was brought up, will there be a similar thing done for this? Uh, oh, this is an interesting one. This one, this one kind of came up. It wasn't a part of a general discussion, Sarah, but there was a little conversations were happening around here. Suggest redrawing of the Harbor Edge District to include Stanley, Stanley's Garage and the convenience store, move them over there. But there were other conversations. Why are these in here? Why is that in there? Why? So they were, the, the line was bouncing all over the place. So I guess it was where the line is drawn.
I thought it was actually quite a bit of a agreement that it would be good to include Stanleys and see this in the Harbors Edge.
Yeah, when it, when it got that, when it got down to the broader conversation, but there's a little conversation. Uh, oh, this is, this is a very interesting one. Should Harbors Edge be zoned for commercial only? No residential. No consideration of it. So that's a, who knows?
A question. That was a definitive, I feel strongly.
I feel stressed. Yeah, that wasn't a question. It's, this should be zoned. And then, and then the comment to follow the, the need more commercial, less residential. Oh, this is a good one. This is, uh, this is every time I think of affordable housing, I think of Chris. Make zoning adjustments to include more affordable housing. Change the basis for determining the percentage of affordable housing and the criteria by which you can get in. Yeah, that was more of a statement, less of a question as well.
Okay, great.
Team A.
Okay, how about Team B?
We didn't have as many as Gordon had. There was, um, at the top of the, uh, the walk, there was a lengthy discussion. Debate, actually, um, that kept us in one place for a long time. So we, uh, didn't get moving for a little while. But some questions that came up from there were um, someone asked whether we should consider moving, um, the idea of uh, this higher up um, territorially to get out of the flood zone. Um, and then I think we
I'm not sure what that means.
Meaning, meaning that, you know, where we're zoning right now has an issue with being in the flood zone. Why are we doing? Well, it gets, it's gonna get flooded. Or it has already.
It is not in the flood map, the mapped FEMA areas. We, I pulled those down.
Yeah.
But, but go on.
Yeah.
At some point.
Yep. And then what I thought was a great comment was that, um, in our FAQs, if we could have a chart that shows, uh, that has on, on, in one column, what is, what currently exists and then in the next column, what has changed, just so it's easy to see the two side by side. And that was really pretty much other than a couple of, uh, similar questions to what Gordon asked. That's the other news.
Okay. Other things that people heard or thought about?
So I, I want to report on a couple of conversations. Which had to do with how complicated the zoning is and how there's a lot of misinformation already being spread around. Uh, that we need to get our hands on and correct. And, uh, there were a couple of, couple of times people said this is why is it so complicated? Why is it 10 pages long? Can, can it be one page long? Of course, the answer to that is it's a legal document. And it has to be, but there may be some way uh, presenting, well, reviewing instead of language as a standalone thing that people can refer to instead of trying to go through all these, uh, charts and uh, land use things and so forth. As for the flooding, it seems to me that the flooding overlay district would be, would take precedent over what we're doing. And I don't think we, to some extent are necessarily, you know, wheelhouse against trying to figure out how high things should be.
I had a couple other, other, other people's notes. Go ahead.
So in our group, um, Team B, um, there were questions about parking. There were questions about why not also allow residential on the first floor with a special permit in Harbors Edge? Um, with the concern being, you know, economic downturn, vacant storefronts, um, more space for residential, you know, just looking at why, why foreclose them? Um, so there was that comment from a couple of people.
One comment that came up pretty consistently from Oh, I'm sorry. The one comment that came up, uh, a couple of times um, in some side conversations was to Chris's point about making it simple, making it simple somehow. And I thought actually the chart at the back of the handout that you gave us is a pretty great start.
Do you think that's some errors on it?
Well, yeah. There's that, but the, but the notion of it is a good notion. And then the other comment that was persistent was do you really need two zones? Can you really? I mean, it makes it more complicated to think about it. Maybe if you look at the differences um, between the two zones in terms of the regulations, is it enough difference to have two separate zones? That was a persistent question.
I would say our group was pretty on board with the two zones. They got that, why they were different. Almost like our group really felt strongly that residential one space per per residential unit was not enough. They were adamant, adamant about that.
It was like 180 degrees the other way.
But your group had people who So that's a cause, yeah.
Yeah.
The other, um, piece that I, just, um, as we thought about before, I had noted, um, those properties that were under 6,000 square feet and I realized that I did not look at a lot with question. So we should go a little deeper into the map and see what properties have other limitations that would require them to have a daily, so that we just know that. That's just something I noted as I was going along and thought, hmm, I didn't think about that. The, uh, special permit for all uses, um, more, you know, lots of open space, particularly those, um, a lot of questions about how the CHOD um, sort of again, understanding that this is the underlying zoning. I think we kind of got, got there.
But that's really, that is a really interesting.
Can I ask you a question? What, you said the other group had an opposite opinion of what? What was the?
Well, they were delighted to have one parking space per unit. They were delighted to have the reduction in the parking because
the Have a reduction in the parking.
In the parking requirements, down to one, right?
I was thinking about it, what? I mean, if you have a one bedroom, then one makes sense. But if you built a four bedroom, one doesn't really make, probably make sense. So maybe we should actually tie the parking more to the size of a residential unit.
On the other hand, if you have two cars, why on earth would you want to live in the downtown?
Right. Yeah, the whole idea of walkability and
Well, I think it was, well, let's
I'm just saying, I'm just saying the market might take care of it.
Because if you think about your looking, how many houses are for rent in, how many places are for rent in Manchester right now? Not a lot, is my guess. And so if you want to live in Manchester for access to the train or access to the beach or access to your in-laws um, or to have your kids in the schools. You might live wherever you can get a place.
You rent a house really, if you want four bedrooms. I mean, they're planning your houses that are owned, you know, by others and
I mean, cargo's putting in three, three bedroom, um, units. That's their, that's their plan. So that's it right in the downtown with a three bedroom.
They're providing the parking to do it.
Right.
So that's the market took care of it.
I don't, I haven't seen how many spaces they have. So I think it's still something that we I mean, I understand that developers want fewer spaces. I understand that. But the point, so the other piece of it was that the
Oh, it's, I don't, I think it's a little unfair to characterize people as developers.
Yes.
They are people who are current owners of the property, um, that are many of them mixed use, actually.
If we require space and a half, most of the properties aren't gonna get the residential use on the upper floors, because you don't have the parking. So that's just gonna stop what we wanted to have happen, which is more people living in the downtown. So there's a price to pay for
So there was definitely some people on our group who would disagree with, we want more people to be living in the downtown.
Oh, for sure. There are people who don't think any more people should ever come and live in Manchester.
Well, that's what they, that's not what they said. They said that they felt that they should have more congestion in downtown. So would, I don't know necessarily, we didn't, it mean
Comments along that line, yeah. Um, that, you know, parking, number one concern, I think from our group is, you know, finding parking and then the the lot behind, you know, behind here and, you know, especially with flooding and, and those concerns. But vibrancy was also mentioned.
Yeah. But we heard a lot of other things. We had, um, Steve was in our group, so he talked a lot about the improvements that have been made in downtown and
Yeah, Steve, Steve is great. We got to a different corner. He talked about what Cleveland Streets has done, what the downtown improvement had done 10 years ago to remove sidewalks, walls, and the intent of what it's going to be now for future. So he was, he was a great supplemental speaker.
Yeah. Okay, the, um, so with, uh, let me just ask Mark, do you have any other comments of things you've heard?
Um, not really. I mean, there was, um, like, uh, someone said, a large, large discussion at the beginning about, um, you know, uh, and confusion about, uh, how the bylaw has progressed. And people were looking at older versions and the fact that the planning board has made a lot of adjustments was pointed out. And once, once we discussed that, I think, uh, uh, some of those issues kind of went away. There was still a few, few issues that need to be worked out either affirmatively for but again, you're getting close to the point where you're having some conflicting views on the same, on many of the same issues. So I don't know how many, how much more adjusting you, you may want to do. Um, so, because you've, you've made a lot of, um, uh, changes based on the, the initial public comments, but now we're reaching out to the general public and, uh, um, so that's, that's just something to consider. But, um, all of the various things that you brought up were, were mentioned at various stages by lots of different people, so.
The other question that came up in our group, um, was what, what constitutes commercial? And I think of a statement that we largely took what's currently allowed as commercial and moved it over to these two districts. And I think that's a pretty fair statement. And to the point of, we could actually just maybe do a bulleted list of those uses in the frequently asked questions rather than try to rely on the use table. Is one, one thought.
That's a great idea.
Um, and then the other piece that came up was that, um, the input was similar to the, um, forum back in July, that they want, that this person wanted, um, uh, active uses, not passive uses. Um, you know, uh, restaurant, not, or retail, not, um,
Well visors.
Not, well, the base visors. So, I mean, I guess we could zone for that. I think that might be difficult at this point. There was also discussion about well, what if it's a wonderful retail store today and then that closes and some other store comes in? How are you gonna prevent that? And, and I think that's a question that, that we, the zoning cannot answer.
Right. That is all market force.
That's market forces and, um, and um, but there was a feeling, uh, it's that's, I want, we want a vibrant downtown that has people going in and out of shops and that kind of thing that yeah, we're, you know, that's the, the, the look and feel people. I think we all agree with that, but yeah. So, and the other piece back about Elm Street, um, the other feedback we just got, I sent it to you about 5:30. We got a email from Mark Glofsky about Elm Street, um, arguing that Elm Street should not be in the district. For a variety of reasons, um, so, uh,
The Mariposa.
Mariposa, particularly the Mariposa Building might want to convert to housing and that's becoming a neighborhood after cross towing was, um, changed to the, uh, you know, the, the house, housing there, then it became more residential and now we're, um, sort of precluding that. He also made a case for the small parcel at one Elm Street being, becoming residential, but that is a, um, smaller than 6,000 square foot lot. So no matter what happens there, there's gonna be a variance needed to be able to do anything other than what's there today, I think.
People do like to, you know, um, protect their own property interests.
Yeah.
We, we expect to hear that.
Yeah, okay. Um, so Marcus, I think, made the, um, case for, um, sort of staying the course and hearing more from folks, um. We have the frequently asked questions, which I think Mark was gonna take the next stab at trying to get them in there. Um, that use table that I
Talking about that, Mark.
Yeah, that mark. Which other mark is there?
Glofsky's.
Oh, right. Yeah. And, um, we need to get those up on the website. And I think that probably it that we should not put up the zoning yet, because it confuses people in, on the website. Obviously, people are seeing it in our packets because it's part of the public meeting. But, um, if you are looking at the zoning, it is a draft for public comment, um, and, um, it's going to continue to get tweaked. So I think unless anybody has a particular, um, issue that they think we should revise based on input or thoughts or errors, um, today. I think the substantive ones that I heard were Seabreeze is part of the Harbors Edge. Uh, one district instead of two. And, uh, commercial only in Harbors Edge. Those are the three big things that I think. Then parking, we're gonna
Parking, may I say something about parking?
Absolutely.
There is no, no board meeting, department meeting, anywhere in this town, any day, that parking is not an issue. Is, is this a larger issue that we'll just keep moving around? Is, is, should this be a town? Town, uh, moving forward to create adequate parking? What is perceived to be adequate parking? Rather than that's just
Well, there are opposite views.
Right, right.
So, so as far as parking goes, every community I've ever worked in, everybody perceives that there's not enough parking, whether it's a small, smaller communities than this or 100,000 people. They feel there's not enough parking. You had a study done that shows that there is adequate parking. Uh, people may have to walk a half a block or a block two where they're going, but there is sufficient parking. Uh, again, I think, um, that's also not a bad thing to, at some point, you get to the, where, where you do have to explore other parking options. I mean, look at successful, um, centers where, you know, you may have to walk a couple blocks or drive around for five minutes before you get a spot, so, um, uh, but you do that because there is the vibrancy and there are places you want to go to, so, um, so I don't necessarily see that as a bad thing. I think that's a perception thing. The other thing about the two districts, I think, uh, we need to really explain in, in, um, kind of our frequently asked questions and other materials, uh, why it's necessary as well as why the document is as long as it is, because it is based on our current zoning bylaw. So we have to include all of the, um, the items in there to, to make it a viable, uh, distinct district, so.
I, I, I just wanted to underline Sue's comment about that there are two different opposed views about parking. And part of what we're talking about here is preserving, you know, the kind of unique character of the town where things are close together and where you don't pave over. We don't want to be a mall. We can't compete with a mall. And vibrancy and the amount of asphalt, I think, are in conflict. You know, the more parking, the less shopping, the less people walking by shops. You know, I think
However, if I may say, however, we're not talking about today. We're talking about the future. If, if, if in fact, this does catch on and there is an increase in the number of residents that are able to be built and somewhat it actually does develop, we will be short parking spaces. So those comments, where will we park, which we heard bunches of times, maybe not be relevant today, but it will become relevant in the near future if this catches on.
Well, let's see if it catches on. I mean, I'm ready to deal with that question in the future. Not, because we, I mean, if in fact, the parking study had said, well, you're at 80, 90%, that's a different kettle of fish and what it did say, which is 65%.
I want to add one more point about the parking is, as a young person and as somebody who went without a car for almost four years and without a car for my actual first year in Manchester, true story. I took, I rode my bike from downtown when I, when I bought my property. And, uh, I, I, I did the showing and everything on bike. I don't have a car, but, um, I, I, I did go with that. I want to know a lot of young people and retirees who both, uh, I've, I've talked to both about this issue. And I think that the downtown is the perfect opportunity for that, you know, we have some of the best public transportation in the country. Um, and one space, one space per residential unit, I think absolutely makes sense. And I think there's a whole lot of people who would absolutely love to have that. And there's other communities, um, that it's zero spaces. And there's, there's a whole, whole lot of people out there who, who could take advantage of that, especially young people looking for places um, in this area.
So you're an advocate for the one parking space per
I think, I think looking at what other communities have done and looking at the, the market, I think that absolutely makes sense.
Yes, I, I, I bring it up, it's more of a generic question. I mean, a, a future-proofing question, if you will, than right now. So yes, I understand and I agree with everything we're doing here. But if it does catch on and all those units happen, it actually may prevent the construction of residential units because they don't have the parking available to them. And I think at some point, the town has got to enter into the frame, provide something. Not, not today.
I know, I see what you mean there. Yeah, yeah, that, that still constrains it.
My concern is that this is gonna be the single biggest issue on town meeting floor. I really want this to pass. So we have to be strategic about how we're gonna get this thing passed. That's my, my view. Um, and I think we're gonna have to that, so that, that was sort of Um and I think we're gonna have to, that so that that was sort of understood by our group, actually. Um there was uniform understanding that our current general district is.
Adequate.
Problematic for our vibrant downtown. That part was understood and I think there was also understanding that can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good for getting this to happen. Um so that I I do definitely, um you know, people said, and they also really like the design standards. That's the other piece. Design standards was like, yes, absolutely do that. Um there were two other. Uh one other thought on parking, just as a what if, um as we think about this is maybe we go with the one parking space. Per residential in the town center and one and a half in the Harbor's Edge. Just as as a way to to reflect a compromise for the uh this. Uh you know, it's sort of like dogs on the beach is like six months. Uh because that was how we got through the the town meeting. I'm just, I'm not sure it's the right answer. I'm just throwing it out there as the hope, as the, you know, let's keep the government open.
So I just want to say about strategy, which is. It's certainly important to be strategic by getting through town meeting, but if in doing so, we destroy the whole purpose of the zoning bylaw.
But I don't think we would be destroyed.
If we want to get more residential downtown.
If we want to get more people living in downtown to support the commercial uses, if that's our assumption. Then to suddenly say that you're gonna have more parking than you need, which is gonna not allow a lot of the residential development. Where, why bring it to town meeting at that point? I mean, what's the point?
Well, I think because the point is that our current general bylaw.
Well, we could bring something to town meeting, but it wouldn't be creating more residential uses.
I mean, I think it's early to do that.
Yeah.
I think, I think we put it out there because I do think, I don't, I mean. I think no one can pretend to omniscience at this point and people certainly change their minds about everything. But the sentiment about downtown and the emotional feeling about its good. Um is very strong and it may override, you know, the over the thing about parking. Because P I I people are so surprised to learn that it could all turn into single family homes. I mean, it's like, oh, my gosh, holy smokes.
Yeah, for sure. Um we also had one other comment about um that the increase. Allow in allowed uh particularly impervious surface um was not recommended. So we've gone from um sixty, I think it's gonna have that number right um. Okay, so right now in G, it's forty by structures and seventy percent impervious. And the proposal was sixty percent by six structures and eighty percent by um impervious. And the recommendation was that that was too much. So, you know, that sixty percent by uh structures also by definition. Leads you much for parking.
Definitely true.
Yeah, so um that was just input. I don't think we need to, I think the idea was that. You know, with flooding and um and in actuality, that might be a decrease in what's left there today. Because we have a lot of impervious in some of these lots. We we haven't studied that. Okay, um let's see, are there anybody want to make a any um. Strong argument for making any changes at this moment?
I just have a question. I need some help understanding something. Um let me see if I can find it. Ah yes, okay, it's on page six. And it's the addition to section four point two table of uses. And we have two uh there. Um mixed use with first floor residential, but I don't know how it's exactly mixed use unless the upper floors, I guess, are commercial. And mixed use without first floor residential. So um. Wouldn't it be simpler to simply have one thing that said mixed use with. Uh commercial in the, you know, at the street, like street facing thing for twenty or twenty-five feet. Something like that and just have it one because it's just clear is yes, yes.
Are different. So in the first edge district. You can, you're not allowed to have um first floor residential.
Well, you're not, we, right, but you are allowed in the town center with uh PB with a special. But people were asking about, wouldn't you want to do that in the Harbor's Edge district also, right? So then, I I don't know.
But that's why they're different. I mean, it's a little bit uh hard to read because it's a negative.
Yes, it's a double negative.
So we might want to change that. I think that that would be good to figure out how to change it mixed use.
With first floor commercial. How about mixed use with first floor commercial?
I agree. So I think that makes sense, but I do think it needs to be two lines. Okay, Mark, can you think a little bit about that?
Okay.
That's that's a language rather than a substantive, I think.
Yep.
Um and then I had one other question. Uh let's see, on page two. At the very top of page two, item number four. Uh conversion of an existing dwelling into three family with no increase in glo- gross floor area. Why would, why wouldn't we just say yes to that if we want more housing? Why would we have, there's, there's no such structure in the Harbor's Edge, I don't think.
But that's not how, that's not commercial on the first floor. That's why.
Well, right, but if there are five existing homes that are single family homes. And people would like to convert them to a multifamily home, why would we get in the way of that? Because we want everything to be uh commercial, every single thing.
And it, Mark, what's your, I think the, I think the intent was that we wanted to push commercial on the first floor. Or have a special permit.
Well.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I I think that's, that's the, the whole point is that this would um require. Yeah, they would have to put some commercial on the first floor on the street for s- street side of the property. If they converted it, um they would have to turn it into a mixed use unless they came for a planning board special permit. They just can't do it by right. So if they have some. I can think of one particular property that has something related to the topography of the land that might. Be a good argument to uh if they wanted to convert, for example, the brick building next to the.
The cargo?
Cargo.
Yeah, the cargo into three units and come to the planning board for a special permit and make the point that. The building's up high, um that it's a, you know, there's no driveway, so to speak, to drive up. Um it's set back from the street, you gotta climb up those stairs. I mean, it is. There's a very good argument to issue a special permit for that conversion if they so chose to make it three units. Um so. But if there's, um let's say they wanted to convert the uh the museum. They sell that, convert it, you probably want that first floor to be. Uh a port, you know, of it to be commercial, uh because it fills in that gap along the streetscape from. The end of the the commercial users down by town hall versus the in in the co- commercial users on Beach Street, so.
Yeah, but the museum isn't appropriate.
If it was a dwelling.
Yeah, but it's not a dwell and I guess I would have trouble with it if there were fifteen or twenty. Existing dwellings that were like single family dwellings, but it seems to be an unnecessary constraint. If you're not changing anything about the footprint of the building and what you're doing is going likely from a single or two family. To a three family. So it in, you know, I don't know.
Well, and.
I make it harder.
I guess because we're. Switching between we want more housing and we want to preserve our commercial space.
Right.
So our initial goal was revert, reserve space on the street front. And this whole area for commercial or community space and so we start carving out these little. Things, I mean.
Well, but but the thing of it is, one of the things with the MBTA and the thing that was expressed often. Was a a a feeling that people had about the texture of the town. And I think Chris put his finger on it at the time, which was what they like is the variety. And so when I walk from um, you know, the little jewelry store, gray house, whatever. Down to town hall, I'm not particularly bothered by and I think it's a nice thing for the texture of the town. To have, there's a couple of single family homes. There's the brick one high up and then there's some.
The only one, that's the only one.
Well, there, I think it's a two family that's on it. It's, they've got a couple. Uh buildings that look like single family homes and have been converted over the years, I guess, into two family. Or three family. I don't know their specific circumstance, so I'm not bothered by that. And in fact, it might be tedious to have it be all commercial. Every single one. I don't know.
But a special permit doesn't, doesn't, it just says we want to have some review of this. Um and that review would balance the um.
Neighborhood character.
Yeah, so I think that's the the intent and it makes it easier to understand our original intent. It's consistent with our original intent, which is to retain the commercial and even expand commercial. Uh along the street. So I don't disagree with you that variety is important and um but uh.
This would allow variety to stay if they wanted to do it, yeah, it came to us, yeah, yeah.
So I have two other points. One of them is, why is it planning board doing the special permission on ZPA? That was asked, maybe it's more appropriate for the ZPAs and say typically we do change the use. And the second thing is something that just occurred to me that Richard Smith brought up. Yeah, I think in the beginning of the walk, when he talked about. Uh in fact, this is the economic part of this. He talked about, uh for example, the hardware store. And that if suddenly we're allowing residential use above it, that it might affect the market for hardware. Not in necessarily a bad way, but it would, it might become more uh sort of a froof froo store. Boutique store than hardware store. And I told him, I said, you know, that's. That's not what zoning is can handle. And that could happen anyway, it could happen tomorrow. Uh but I think it's something we should uh be prepared to. To discuss because I think it's gonna.
Yeah, that was his big argument for keeping it commercial in the Harbor's Edge.
Yeah.
Um keeping it all. Uh keeping it all. He said that the kinds of commercial that you will get will be these. Sort of small specialty stores that are of a small floor plate um rather than Crosby's. I I I have no idea what we'll get. Everybody's got their idea about what the future, it looks like, um so.
I just wanted to raise it because we're going to be dealing with it because it comes up later.
Okay, um. So uh let's see, um it looks like we have um a couple of people on. Might not have been here before, so I'm gonna just, I what I should have done in the beginning is just say. The town's website under planning board explains what we're trying to do at the annual town meeting. Which is to present a new zoning um section, which has two new districts, the purpose of which is. Originally sparked by our concern about retaining our commercial and community uses on the first floor in those three districts. As well as to uh allow mixed use, which is uh commercial retail on the first floor with housing either behind. Or above. And I think the best place to catch up, if you are just joining us, is on the planning board section of the website. And stay tuned there because there will be frequently asked questions and we will be holding a public forum. December sixth, December fourth, fourth, is our, is our plan for a uh. Not a public forum.
Well, and by the way, I found a little typo, is that what you have to fix? The first intent of this. First line of the whole thing says, create a downtown district. Well, in fact, we're. The two districts.
Yeah, create downtown districts, right? Okay. Um I guess by way of also to, one quick thing and uh. I think the new zoning, the map is on the website as well, two districts, a town center from Elm Street to. Uh the post office and Stanley's garage and a second district, the Harbor's Edge district. Which is basically the properties along the tracks, the racetrack, the bank, Crosby's and Harbor's Point. Okay, so just.
Can I ask one?
Yeah.
Um since this was not brought up in my group, what was the reason to move? Stanley's Garage and the Seabreeze into the Harbor's Edge District?
That was on the side. Oh, I didn't hear that.
There were also a couple of points about that, uh one being, you know, obviously, right now, it's easy to kind of imagine the parking. But also another being on the corner, there were some concerns about residential above and having kind of. Poor sightlines come around that corner and around that, uh around that intersection.
And even though it's not open space, it has an open space. It is a airy space, I guess. It's between, you think about the distance between the building and the Crosby's building. Um if you are at uh, if you bring those um setbacks into ten feet. Um you close that in significantly in that area. Um and there was a significant thought about uh bigger setbacks in the Harbor's Edge too. So um.
What, what setbacks were, was anything discussed?
No, it was just uh bigger, like uh, you know, the the space. I think it's actually a valid point. If you've got palas right up to the street and you brought Seabreeze, you know. The Seabreeze apartment apartments right up to the street and the uh Crosby's boutique. And you know, grocery store, that intersection.
Some more intimate corner.
Right, intimate corner, right, it comes um a very different feel. But um I mean, things, things change, but that was the point, that was the the.
Actually, from the town planning, one of you, just as a planner in the room, the gas station on the corner is an anathema to a dent. Which you don't want to see.
Even though we all need it, I mean.
Don't you think historically, you look at the, the people, that there was a gas station in a corner store?
Well, it was a wagon repair.
The wagon repair in Stanley's. Yeah, upstairs.
Um, yeah, hard.
But if you're laying out of town, you want to have corners defined by buildings, that's a very important thing.
Okay, so uh go back to the question, any other changes besides um that that we would want to adjust to?
I would say, so I would say from my perspective, no, well, we're gonna take this and move it forward to a larger public forum. For more discussion and more.
Yeah.
Okay, good, then then that's we should do. We're not drawing a line in the sand tonight by anywhere.
No.
And and Mark's working on the use, combining everything.
Yeah.
So we'll have them, is the intention to have them for December fourth?
Yes, I think so.
So logistical question, I went to try and find the most recent version yesterday and. I couldn't. So where do I? I couldn't. So where do I find the most recent version?
I think Mark, yes. Mark, I think we sent it to you. Uh, there was a, I printed out a copy.
Yes, I have that.
That's the printout and Mark has that, but I can electronically resend that to everybody.
Yeah, or if it could just put a PowerPoint in, in one of our folders.
The date.
Yes.
A lot of good ideas. Well, it does have a date on Sarah's printout, but couldn't find.
Yeah, so I changed yours from sub district to two districts. So, okay, I will, I will do it.
Thank you.
Yes.
I don't know, same with your chart. So I couldn't find that either and, um.
The chart was tossed into the PowerPoint, so the rainy walk.
But I looked in there today and it's still the old chart unless I can't have access to the new chart.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this, is this the chart you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great chart.
It was, uh, I couldn't get it out of PowerPoint into Word, so there are screenshots, which is very. So it was like eleven o'clock at night.
Well, it's a combo of, of, you know, my, you know, dinosaur technology skills and, you know, the way.
Okay, I will put those in the communications folder. Um, okay.
So this will be the draft that's, so it's gonna stay the same until December sixth. And we hear from.
I think that's what we're hearing.
I think that's really important because some of the questions in our group were because people had older versions of things. And, um, that hadn't reflected, you know, the response to comment.
Okay, um, and then the last piece of this discussion, I think, is should we have a, um, communications meeting again, um, to, uh, um.
Well, certainly before the.
Before the.
Oh, my gosh.
Easier said than done.
Next.
Thanksgiving Day.
Don't work.
What are you doing, Peter?
What about?
Next, Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday. Beginning of next week. Fridays are the only day that's consistently really bad for me.
What about? Late Monday afternoon?
The seventeenth?
Yeah, that would work.
And that would be fine. Four thirty, what's?
Well, that's rough for me and I'd.
Yeah, no kidding. Yeah, it's really close.
If you arrive, you will be.
I may get out of there by seven.
I have to get out by seven too. So four thirty?
On the seventeenth.
Seventeen?
Sounds great.
Okay, Mark, can you post that? Please? All right. Oh, sorry, you're muted again. You have to, uh, just give me a thumbs up. Awesome. Okay.
Does Jane come to these meetings just to chat?
Just so I want to start pointing more.
Very golden night.
I have a, okay, um. So we're gonna meet then and we'll talk a little bit more about the forum at that point. And Mark, it'd be good if you could get the draft FAQs in good shape by that meeting. Okay, he's giving me another thumbs up. Um, okay, before we jump, um, I see one hand up, um. Uh, Jim, I'm gonna ask, we did hear, um, you can go ahead and speak. I'm gonna ask that you sort of keep it brief. We heard a lot from you on, uh, Saturday, but, um, if you have some new, a new idea, that would be helpful.
I didn't, so, okay, thank you. I didn't hear any of my comments from, from Saturday, uh, spoken out today. And, um, I also got a copy, uh, I'm, I was gonna say, I also got a copy of Mark, um, um, the attorney's letter and he, he was, he, there were some questions in there that didn't get read out of his letter. Um, is this, can I ask, uh, Mark Resnick? Uh, the copy I'm working off of right now is eleven, ten, twenty-five, today's date, that I think I downloaded off of your website. Is that the current version right now? It is. Thumbs up? Excellent. So that is available on the website. I think I got it out of the meeting package, um, section. Yeah, so, so it is. And the latest map was also available on there. As with the hotel parking, I think that was a third document. The, uh, and, and now just based on what you guys are saying here, you're locked in to what I'm looking at right here. There's not, no changes to this, no discussion, um, until the forum?
I think we agreed that we would, um, use this draft as of tonight, that we're not gonna make any changes prior to the forum. I think that's correct.
Okay, I, I personally, I don't think this is a set, this, this draft is not, uh, is not quite complete. You guys are getting close, but there's some things in here that just still to me, um, don't make sense. The, but that's, that's just my personal opinion. Um, so the only, um, the only, um, input I'm gonna have or anybody in the public until that forum is to, is just to go out and rally other people and try to explain to them why some of this is not good. As, as opposed to sitting here and discussing it and trying to make a few more changes to this. Is that correct? I mean, I understand I wasn't at all meetings. I made maybe four or five of them and God bless you guys for being here as much as you, you do as volunteers. It's commendable for sure. Um, but it's just not ready. It's, there's just a few things, you know, uh, just, this, just a few more items that are, that are closed. And I'm still also not convinced, nobody's convinced me, um, the logic in why the northern side of the train tracks is in the Harbor Edge District, when it real, that section really mirrors the rest of the town center district as much as anything. I can understand the forty beach because of the size of it and the potential, but, um, I don't, I don't think the restrictions on housing belong in that hot, in the northern side of the train tracks. Um, I don't, it, it, that, you know, doesn't make sense to me to pull that out. And quite frankly, it lowers the values of the property um, significantly because of the use restrictions. And, um, you know, so that would, that would be one of the, one of my major issues um, with this. But then there's also just some residential stuff that doesn't really make sense. If you think it through in here.
So it would be really helpful, Jim, since you feel like we haven't captured your comments, for you to write them down and send them in an email to Mark and to me, and we will send them to the entire board. Um, because I think while you're, um, certainly entitled to your opinions, I think we've heard some of them, but if you can be very specific about the, um, specific language that you would suggest, rather than, uh, simply stating that you think that we're, we haven't done a good job, that would be really helpful.
Well, I didn't say that. You guys are working your butts off and you've done a good job. I think you've done an excellent job and a lot of this is good.
So if you could simply write down specific, um, suggestions, um, to the bylaw that you think makes sense. For example, your, your, um, it's a specific suggestion that you think the Harbor's Edge. Forty Harbor Street. I hear that. Yeah, so just if you could send us an email, that would be hope, most hopeful.
What, you're asking if you will get a response to those questions?
No, that.
After I do this list, I'll do that. I'll sit down, draft up a few things. It's not a lot. It's not a lot.
We don't go back and forth on email with, um.
So that's my point. I think this is a good forum to sit here and just say, you know, just for an example, um, the conversion of an existing dwelling. So there's no re, no commercial in an, in an existing dwelling. And somebody wants to, without increasing the footprint, wants to add residential within that existing dwelling. Um, which is yes, right now in the general district. You're saying planning board required to make that decision in the town center district and a big fat no in Harbor's Edge District. I, if you really wanna support housing, why don't, it's already a residential. It's not a commercial. You, you're, what you're saying here is you're forcing somebody, um, but you're not allowing somebody to do anything but create a, a commercial space on the bottom of their residential home. That's something that's already an existing sole residential property, right? So my, my, uh, my thoughts on that is town center, that should be a big yes. And a planning board at, at, at the very least for the Harbor's Edges District, right? There's no, I don't think there's any housing in there right now anyways, residential.
Can I just correct you? Can I just, I'm gonna just, um, make sure that we get from people who might not be as familiar with this. The current proposed zoning does not prohibit that change. It says that the planning board would have to review a special permit application and act on it. That's different than what you just said, which is that we would not be allowing it. Okay, in the, but in the town.
Your proposed zoning says planning board and, and that, and you're exactly right. Now, what I'm saying is, right now, if I have a residential property with no commercial in it and I wanna add an additional unit, and I think with the ADU rule, I can anyways. But if I wanna add an additional unit, two units, I guess, because of ADU, I think I'm entitled to one. You should let, allow somebody to do that by right. I, I don't understand why you wouldn't and why you're making them go in front of the planning board for that. And, and, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna debate whether the Harbor's Edge District is required or not and you win, and, and, and you win that debate, then at least that should be a planning board. There are no, it's a moot point, I think, because there are no, I don't think there are any single family homes in there right now. Um, doesn't look like it.
This one, okay. So those are two specific.
I don't understand if someone has, you know, and so there's just a few items like that throughout this, this document where it just, um, you know, it's pretty, it's, it was just a few items that are kind of anti-residential, anti-housing.
Okay, if you can send us an email with a specific, so you've just given us two, that would be very helpful. I think we wanna move on to the next um, item on our agenda, um.
So this was not an open forum tonight. This wasn't an open meeting tonight. This was just you guys discussing this?
Yes, but we're taking, this is not a, a forum where we're gonna go on and on about this topic. So I think, um, we've heard from you. We'd love to have uh, your input in, um, specifics and, um, that your specific suggestions and we will look at them, but, um, and, uh, I think we're gonna move on in the agenda, um, at this point. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. 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 Thanks, Mark. All right, can you hear us now? Okay, thank you.
We didn't really say anything important.
Didn't say anything.
As usual, yeah.
But I think we were talking about a sin of a, a definition for in that's smallish. I don't know what that means. I, I threw out twelve rooms, but I don't know what, what is appropriate. Rooms, but I don't know what what is appropriate.
I think twelve.
Twelve is sort of got a nice ring to it. Figures doesn't. And then uh Brian is thinking very strategically. As a planning board member, that the general district should have special permit. Because eh first of all, it might be some great places for an in in the general district and also if the. Downtown zoning were to fail, we could still advance this this uh measure. Um, how about other districts? Well, first of all, do we have an agreement that? Sort of a a consensus that special permit in the general district, a yes in the town center, and a yes in the Harbors Edge makes sense for a an in.
An in uh up to twelve.
In of up to twelve of units.
Where's the restaurant for twelve?
I don't know.
The definition, legal definition, and there's no number of rooms unfortunately.
Yeah.
Did you say that they're typically smaller than hotel that that's?
So would the same parking requirement be required for an in as opposed to a hotel too?
One space for room.
So I mean, that's gonna be.
That'll make it off.
Yeah. I think the um one base space, yeah, for guest room, maybe it just.
And what if it's a special permit every which case?
Just do it as a special permit everywhere? Yeah, it might make sense. I think that does make sense, actually.
Yep, I assume.
If you're gonna be gonna have a restaurant or a. Well, then restaurant would be good.
Yeah, yeah, be great.
But are you saying an in in every district? A special permit?
No, 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 just.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, because I don't think people would go.
No, no, no.
Start with general district LCD and the downtown with a special permit everywhere?
Yeah.
Got it.
So special permit, including town center.
Yeah, I think so.
My one, my one pushback on that would be that could deter. I I don't know if i- if that would. You know, that might deter interests from developing a a hook or an in in the downtown. Um.
People love to come to us for special permits.
Really, really? No, I kind of agree with Brian. I mean, I think it's a detriment. If you wanna encourage it. That's the thing, you have to decide, do you wanna encourage it? Or do you wanna just make it barely possible?
Oh, barely possible.
Uh well, I don't, I mean, I I don't know.
No, I don't, I think that the perception of a special permit is would be discouraging.
Yes.
Yeah. I like, I'm with this, my side of the table here on this.
Okay, yeah, we'll leave it as yes and.
In the general?
And then special permit in the general.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, okay. Mark, you can make that change and figure out some uh role for a um in.
Here's if I can come up with something at this point.
Or we start working on the details, for example. You know, in Weddham's, the seat, the shod has to be seven point five acres or more. That's not gonna work here. Talk about what kind of size do we?
Okay, maybe let's, okay, then let's move on to the my other sort of question. Should we require them what size?
I would say yes.
And would it be acre? Two acres, five acres? If it's five acres, we're not gonna get very many senior housing built because there's so few five acre parcels.
I'm still stuck on that question of scale and type and services provided to determine that.
So there are senior housing in the North Shore. Uh the the uh twenty-five units in Salem at the Pertram House. Twelve units in Danvers and, you know, there are all these very small ones. They don't have to be big.
It's small there, might be huge here, just because of the availability of land.
Well, so how about if we limit density? How about if we say no more than fifteen units an acre?
Well, that's what is current in the general district and I think also in the D one district.
Fifteen units an acre?
Well, yeah, because it's a six thousand square foot lot, you can do two family. So no, I'm wrong. Right, so that's twenty.
But if it's you have a twenty acre lot, the D district, you can really do a two family, so.
Yeah. But I don't think there's any twenty acre lot.
I'm sure there aren't, you just.
We need more speed on it.
I'm just trying to think how to attack it.
That's, I think that's what we're struggling with, is not the idea of. Having your housing. I think we're struggle, I'm struggling with. Um, do we give a density bonus? Do we, um because how do we structure this?
And those are all important for us to go through.
Yeah, and when, you know, I again, I go back to my conversation with. Need to look for what's marketable, which are these independent. Um, you know, basically three fa- three bedroom large, you know, uh spaces, and I don't think that's what you're.
Well, so Sandy and I went to Lee Diacre's project in Wyndham.
Right, yeah.
And, yeah, it's just a clustered housing, we happen to be.
Yeah.
Fifty-five.
Have to have a.
And they're enormous and they're, you know, two million dollars apiece to buy. And they're very attractive, but that's not what we need.
Right, and that can happen if you have. I'm on Pine Street right now or whatever, it could be, you could age limit.
Yeah, sure.
At any three condos or five condos or something.
You don't know what you would, but you could.
I suppose you could try and attack the problem by defining the size of what for purposes of our zoning. Uh senior housing is. And then really, you could say it's permitted, I guess, anywhere, right? Because you, I mean, you you do wanna have the option to use big old houses. Um of which there are plenty in the E district.
Um.
All over. Some in A, all over the place, yeah. Um, so the issue is really the scale of the senior housing, I think.
It almost feels like we need a table, I'm sorry, yeah, we need a table.
On the. I mean, many of our districts are single family owned. And one of the things like Weddham, it's, you're only allowed to have it if multifamily is already allowed in that district.
Ah.
And so that's something, I'm not saying I'm for or against that, but it's like another thing to to think about. So all of a sudden, because it is multifamily, senior housing.
Yeah, I'm allows multifamily anywhere.
Maybe that's probably the.
You know, a trick. Why do they need like twenty?
So then I I don't know what they created this overlay when they would allow it.
But they have senior housing.
Yeah, they have an overlay district.
Okay, um John, could you help us?
Yeah.
A couple of things, um. So the project, I think, is being referred to in the the one in the zone and. Sorry, the zone that's being the i- independent living on, I think that was created specifically for a project or a potential project. I'm not sure how they got around and spot zone. Um, uh, that project never happened. But the zone still exists, it's for hang them all. And um. It might not happen. Um, but um, I guess. And senior housing is absolutely multifamily house, right? I've said, I spoke before, I wish we we allowed multifamily housing in this town in some way. That made it possible, but I'm also trying to imagine where in the town senior housing would be appropriate and be possible, right? And there are definitely two great sites, which are currently senior housing. But not dense enough and not being used to their full potential, but they're not where you'd expect them to be. In the LCD or or downtown, they're in residential districts. Right, the the plains and um. But um to entice people to come and to develop senior housing, we do have to make it meaningful. A unit here, a unit there, that's not gonna happen, right? Forty B might come in and do something significant, right? But then our zoning doesn't matter. But if we want to encourage it and to control it, then we have to be very specific about where it is.
And a forty B can't age limit?
Yes, it can. In fact, the the one that was done in in Wyndham was a forty B, uh over fifty-five.
Yeah.
Naples.
So where where would you suggest, John?
So again, um the plains right up behind.
Yeah.
Oh, so you would build that more intensely?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's the, that's what the MBK zoning allowed and hoped for.
Yeah, same with Newport Park. I think those were both.
Yeah.
Intentionally included for that reason, which is great.
Yeah.
Any place else?
I don't know, small infill things perhaps. I mean, I know when you're talking about bed and breakfast, let's go back to hotels, but one one thing that's. Interesting about bed and breakfast, you can convert a single family home to a bed and breakfast. It's the same deuce as an R R three. So it's actually possible to do that without a whole lot of eggs. Um, or a whole lot of changes to that building, right? So I think that is something that it's up to five rooms, no, no more than five rooms for. If it's to maintain a R three. Anything more than that is a commercial cost. Sorry, I don't wanna confuse the test, but.
Hmm.
Um, so small things like that, I think, are possible.
Uh Mark, you were gonna clarify something or had your hand up a while ago, maybe it's because you couldn't hear us.
Well, I I missed the first part of this, but when you um uh. The the senior housing part you were talking about and you were starting to talk about unit size acres, that type of stuff. Um now that we're mostly there with the downtown district, why don't I put something together? For a senior housing bylaw, kind of somewhat based loosely based on um what was worked on before. Maybe with some more specificity, um and some some size requirements and and other things that um we see in some of these other bylaws. Um and uh I can send a draft out, um. I'll I'll review it with Chris since he's uh really uh the proponent for this and we'll get a draft out for the next meeting. I mean, I think it's um. You know, that uh so that we have something to discuss and we can tweak it from there.
Um, I think Chris had some other questions.
We have another question, which my job in Mark too is.
Okay.
Was should they be just rentals or could they be condos?
Uh you really can't control the form of ownership through zoning?
No, our definition, our definition of senior housing says they're rentals. So we're gonna change the definition.
In our bylaw?
Yes.
Oh, well, that should be changed kinda anyways, so.
The next question I have is, should there be different dimensional requirement setbacks? Uh height restrictions, should they be different from the rest of the zones? Otherwise not, I think a case could be made to do that. And that would include, for example, the open space requirement. Some senior housing bylaws say there should be a minimum twenty percent open space. I think for our town with very small lots, it's not gonna be meaningful, but something to consider.
So what about, I'm I'm not an expert on our, uh is it the cluster?
Yes.
Senior housing, it could possibly fall on cluster? Is that possible?
It's possible, requires five acres.
It requires five acres.
And there's not any kind of, there's not much. And there's not any kind of, there's not much density bonus.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, should we describe prescribed design parameters? Should we say? All units have to be on similar floors or certain sizes. One common one is to have living spaces that are the same, the bedroom on the same level as a living space. All prescribed or whether we just rely on common sense that people aren't gonna build senior housing ladders.
So you're saying be descriptive with the design requirement?
Most of the things that's still to prevent a very.
Part of the actual design of the living units itself?
Yes, alarm, yeah, levers, all these things are spelled out in Bracey. Hamilton, when he goes on for ages about all the stuff. Which I, I think is, you know, we should be worried about performance standards, right?
You know, one of the things you realize.
Back in, um, August of twenty-three, I just went back to the old.
Yeah.
We had spent quite a bit of time on that question and said, design standards. Um, senior housing should be limited to no more than two bedrooms per living unit. At least one bedroom and bathroom should be located on the same floor as the kitchen, living, family area. Maximal living areas should be twelve hundred square feet for two-bedroom unit and nine hundred for one bedroom and six hundred for a studio.
You're not opposed to that, it just.
Again, we were trying to get smaller scale.
Yeah.
Um. So that's, there's actually a draft. I was trying to, I tried to, I, I dropped ball and moving it into the, um, district. Into the today, today's folder, but, um, an area of common open space, twenty percent of the lot area. Um, contiguous retained, impertuity, no more than twenty-five percent of minimum required open space should be wetlands. Um, parking, section six. Um. So we did have, um, conversion of existing structures as well in that draft. Applicants are encouraged to convert existing buildings no longer needed or suitable for their original use into a senior housing facility. Then which considers such conversions, if they're compatible with the character of the neighborhood and taking into the interests of the neighbors and the public. Especially where the site is within a residential area, the building's merit reservation. Then board may waive requirements and design standards and considering conversions and so forth. So this, you have a draft. Um, and I think to get at the issues that Chris is talking about, we really need to. Think through each of these issues, um, and maybe some other issues. All right, and so.
Uh, just a couple of more questions.
I want to just point out that we thought about that in some detail.
Yep.
It would be great to have a copy of that.
Yes.
So my next one is one point five parking spaces for each senior unit. Uh, it might depend on the type of facility. Some of them have been recorded any. Um, but we may need a waiver provision in there depending on the type of facility. Should there be a house on affordable affordability component? And I would argue that, uh, if you require it. You're going to basically force the other seniors to pay for it. Um, so I, I would suggest instead, I mean, send it. Maybe waive some of the density, allow greater units if those are affordable.
I like that idea of the added density with the affordability.
Which I think you've, we've seen in some of the others.
Yeah, we have seen it here.
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
And, uh, my final question is if there are any other conditions that we should be considering.
Well, one thing I liked and some, and I assume this is legal to do this. And the, a few that I saw is some form of local preference. And the one that I read most recently was first to locals, then to immediate family of locals. So like.
Your mother.
Right, right.
There's a name for it. There's a name for that. It's in.
Local preference.
Yep.
And then to residents of towns with reciprocal agreements with the town. That I'm not sure about.
Yeah.
Um, but.
Town employees.
That, yeah, that's, I didn't see that. That's a really good.
Oh, town employee, yeah, is a terrific one.
Yeah, good.
Yeah. That's great.
Let's try it and see if we can get away with it.
Yeah. So that raises my biggest concern about this. Actually, is that if we build it and it's wonderful, they will come from everywhere. Because this is, there is a shortage of this kind of housing to Chris's point. Um, and that if we build it and it's, yeah, people will come from wherever. So I really like having a local.
I do too.
Is that, can we do a local preference, Mark? Is that allowed?
Um, it is, I believe it's allowed. What all the limitations are, I'm not sure. Um, but we'll, uh, look into that.
That'd be great.
Okay, um. And actually, I'm looking, there is a list on our website, um, of the different kinds of. Uh, senior housing. This is again, it was in one of our packets that we never had to, no meeting. Independent living, which I think we know what that means. Co-housing. Where seniors gather to form an organization to provide services and programs to their own members. Supportive housing with services. Uh, assisted living is a, oh, independent living, assisted living is, has license requirements. Micro assisted living, living within a smaller scale, um, with a broad range of services. And then special care residences, skilled nursing and congregate care facilities. Um, that's the sort of larger full spectrum.
Yeah.
And.
Now, is what you just read, Sarah, in the draft from a while back?
Yeah, this is.
I think Chris, you had that definitions, yeah, Chris sent that around, yeah.
Able.
Yeah.
Um, so I will put these in our, um, packet. We actually, uh, Mark and I were talking about this. We have a pretty light meeting, I think, the Monday of Thanksgiving. Um, and this, so let's try to carve out and do this first. Um, and, and I think those two documents, um. Do, um, are pretty helpful. Um, cause they talked a little bit about how much staff.
Right, cause one of the things I saw is good old parking. Um, providing parking for staff and of course, you want to have parking for staff. And so the more complicated the facility.
The more staff.
More staff. I mean, some will come on the train and, but, um.
Right.
Most towns had one parking space for staff at the. I'll say something like the heaviest.
Heavy shift.
Shift, right.
Chris, Chris, is there, is there any discussion related to Newport Park or the plains? I know we've taught, there's been some like, you know, talk about potentially renovating or updating or.
So, uh, I haven't talked to the Housing Authority recently. I think they have some internal issues they're trying to sort out before they crank back up again.
Go ahead.
But, yeah, they're still, they're, they're desperately in need of some.
Okay.
There, there was one notion, I wanted to be sure we thought about as we were thinking about all this. Was in the har- I looked at the Harvard, um, senior housing. And they limited the total number of senior housing dwelling units in total in the town.
Yeah.
And they limited it to a percent of the total town units.
And Reading did something similar and they only would allow so many units to be built in a single year, so.
Right, that's also true.
I don't think we'd have to worry about that.
I don't know, I'm not really worried about that. Um, okay, before we close this out, I'd love to have, if you feel comfortable, just go around and say what. Piece of the senior housing discussion resonates well with you. Like, what is the piece? Of the things we've talked about, not necessarily how do we regulate it, but what is, what's the vision that appeals? So I'll start, cause, um, and that is, I have this. Uh, I have long thought, years ago I lived in an apartment, an old summer house that had seven apartments and I was in my twenties. And I've long, I, my husband and I said, we want to buy that house and live there with all our friends when we're seventy-five. Um, and so that, it's that conversion, this was a conversion of a home, a large home. Into seven apartments and I have this vision that some of these. Kind of white elephant homes, although they seem to be act, you know, enjoyed now as, as.
Single family.
Single family homes.
Yeah.
Great, um, that, uh, that they have a potential for, uh, this co-housing kind of approach. Which is, um, may not offer skilled nursing, but offers a, a community of people. And that's what I'm really interested in. I think, you know, the skilled nursing and the sort of big facilities. Are a little harder for me to get my head around, so that's. Um, any other?
Yeah, if, so one thing, and I was looking at the, um, the slide deck that Kathy put together with the demographics of the town on it. And it just, it reminded me of just the high percentage of residents that are sixty-five plus. And there's a clear need and you hear it from them, myself being one of them. How there's a dearth of opportunity for senior housing in this town. The co-co-housing that I was curious about was not in one facility, but I've heard people in this town talk about buying. A collection of homes with like that, um, property that's up off Summer Street. That the community living there that has a bunch of houses really close together, yeah, close, yeah. But I hear people talking about potentially doing that in town too, to overcome the issue with, um, senior housing. But I, I, I think it's, it's something that we do need to address and I think that the, the town would be appreciative of us doing it. Having some guidelines.
Yeah, good question, Peter, yeah. I'm trying to get my hand around this thing. I'm, I'm so afraid we're gonna get into those seven, ten different types of. Senior housing going from nothing, living alone to full services. It seems like we are in the smaller end of that, simply because of the availability of land, availability of space and. Forgive me. Yeah, many do now. The, uh, I, I'm concerned about that. So you said you've actually heard people looking for senior.
Not looking, talking about, about, um, assembling.
So this would be a developer provided facility, no?
No, it, it would be a group of seniors with the means to buy houses that abut each other. And create a community with some type of services that would, that they'd all be able to.
We can have retired planning board members and we can watch the future planning board meetings together.
Does what you said requires zone, the planning board?
I don't think so. I, I don't know. I don't, I don't think so though, Gordon. I think it's just that this, they could probably bring services in, right? We could.
On their own?
Yeah, I think.
Buy the house, communal.
No, is that something that requires?
There's a whole, there's a whole, Sarah made me, my ears perk up when she says something. Is the assisted living, the things that require much more intensive care have always given me cold chills. And, and when Sarah said micro, I thought, well, what's that mean? I said, I think you said micro assisted living if I heard you.
Communal.
And.
No, no, it's micro assisted.
Successively, right, so the idea of scale is so important.
Yeah.
And what you were talking about, Peter, I believe, and I would have to really dig to find. The articles about it, maybe ten or even fifteen years ago, there was such an effort on Beacon Hill. On the backside of Beacon Hill, where, you know, it's all pretty closed, people are next to each other. You know, they're getting old, they want to age in place, they, you know, they don't want to leave their homes. And they kind of combined forces, not in one specific building, but in neighboring buildings. With, you know, so they all hired the same nurse or the same, uh, physical therapist.
I'll show you a picture of it, maybe in Salem, that's the John Bertram.
Yeah, there you go, so there.
So that's twenty-five units in that house.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
You never know that.
It was just a nice great house.
Uh huh. So the scale piece is very important, but the idea of it is, is pretty useful.
I'm on, I'm on exactly your wavelength there. The service provided, but the need is there. How do you actually meld those two together to a reasonable zoning? Do we go simple, Sarah? Do we just go simple and provide? Without services, just the, the zoning, establishing an age limit or something and then beyond that? I mean, I met with, I just sat with Chris the other day and we just talked about the town and where, where these facilities would be and how big they might be. And just, just general broad discussion. There's really limited spaces and limited size, limited lots. Unless you use an existing building and convert it to something.
Like Sarah was talking about the big.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I, I, I would say my, what states with me about this discussion, senior housing is, um, that there is no one size fits all approach. And that what everybody thinks about senior housing can be different. It can be very small scale and there can be large scale. And there can be luxury senior housing and there can be affordable senior housing. Uh, as Peter was talking about kind of the cottage idea, um, one project that I actually had worked on in Boulder, Colorado. Was called the Academy at Mapleton Hill and it was a luxury senior housing project, but it had an affordable component, right? Uh, and so they had some buildings that were more so the larger scale and they had some that are the cottage style. And if you looked at it from the street, those cottage style, those are single family homes. They look and blend just in right with the neighborhood. So I think senior housing can fit and blend in just as is and you would never know. And it can also be part of like a larger senior housing enclave or, uh, community.
Was that, was that a for-profit development?
It was.
Somebody, some entity ran it and leased or sold or condominiumized or whatever they did, right?
Well, I'm just struggling to have another idea that you and I talked about initially. There's a proposed senior center that would be with the Masons. On the Masons property with a condominium arrangement. Well, why not add senior housing to that and with ten or fifteen units of Robinson Senior Center?
I think the reason for that, let's, let's just take it as given for a second that it's the perfect place and in a sense. I think the problem is that the, that the lease agreement is still being figured out. And the, the actual logistics and the other pieces that you would need to raise it. You need to take it down to, because there's no, the, the, the foundations and the.
Yeah, sure.
I think that little, the logistics of it is like.
The cost of building the senior center would be cut in half and the cost of operating would be cut in half.
I, I, I had.
That's probably.
I met on the facilities group today, a little private session, and we talked about the senior center. And what they're going to do is take it down to bare, raw, everything and build it back up. New energy center, new, 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 new roof, new walls, new window, new insulation value, new HVAC system. They're basically going to, they keep it, maybe it'll look similar to what it is right now. But it's gonna be completely reskinned and rebuilt and re-insulated, re-everything.
So maybe it's the moment for the idea to have a five.
Well, I did, I, I also, I talked to Chuck and to Nate and what they said is, it has gone down the road a bit. It hasn't been settled, it hasn't been decided, but there's a bit of a challenge with, is the Masons who are on there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Masons are.
They're still negotiating though.
The Masons are actually.
One other point to make that I've seen is there can be a, a apartment or a larger building. With facilities or services that is part of a larger community of single family cottages or homes. That can, kind of, that could have access to those services or facilities too. So that's something to think about.
There's also a new report, it's part of a national move that, uh. There's also a new report, it's part of a national movement, uh. A, an organization that takes care of seniors in their own homes. It's like a club kind of, so they, you give services and you just give. So there's a whole range of things that can happen.
But it does feel like. We have a lot of seniors who are aging in their own homes and so what we don't have is smaller scale. So if you want big scale luxury, that's sort of the, do it in your own home. Coordinate with your neighbors, hire, you know, it seems to me that it's that smaller scale. Um, if we, and I really like a local provision. Maybe we focus right now on smaller scale without the skilled nursing and that sort of next level of. Things that, you can add that in later, then get sort of introduced this, so that there's a density bone, you know, there's a. You could do X number of units per acre, whatever that is. And um. We designed standards and special permit review and um.
So is, is this something that we ever, are, is there an expectation that that might become another? Article for the uh meeting or?
Now, if we can do it in, in the way Sarah was just describing, make it a first step.
Right, but what, the reason why I asked is, um, I, I think the format of the way we're doing. Town revisioning, similar to what you did with the MBTA is a good one, the public forum, getting people involved early. So that, I think there's more, there are less surprises when you bring it to town meeting that way. And I know the senior housing has been a, a topic for many years, it sounds like, Chris, I personally haven't. Heard that much about it, but I'd love to see what type of response we'd get if we, if we adopted a similar.
Sure.
Strategy for that.
But before, before we finish, I've been, I've been working for private developers my whole career, there's this. They have a goal in mind, they didn't know what they want, they just go get it here. That, that, that building over there, I took, after I spoke to Chris, I came over and took a look at it. It is ripe for redevelopment and just to something that would be. Far better and more fruitful, more useful than that building right there, low single level. I, it's with a, with a grass yard around it.
But that's, you're planning, we're just, that's.
I know, Sarah, but is, is there any vehicle at all that that thing is being discussed right now, is there anyone? It is separate.
Go to a meeting.
Really not a, I, I feel like that's, but I'm, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with you.
I know, I.
Does the current zoning permit it?
Would zoning permit senior living as well as the senior center?
Yes, the general district.
Yeah, general district, so it would have those rules.
Well, municipal, you have.
I'm just thinking of the practicality, the, the, the practical application. If we're talking about it and what might happen, what could happen and somebody might do it. Here's a case where we have an opportunity. To maybe suggest, maybe get this Brian Solace, Brian Solace is the actual one negotiating over there with them.
Not sure.
Up on the planet from the select board.
But I don't think that's like, that's something that we can, I mean, we, if we want to make a recommendation to the select board, we can do that, but I'm, I'm not sure.
I hate to see an opportunity go by, if they're doing, they're spending millions of dollars to convert it to something. So why don't you add a floor, make a living out of it and you solve a bunch of problems? That's all.
That might be.
Thinking of you, but.
Yeah, no.
Aren't they, aren't they, and sorry, I won't go, that's, yeah, we need to go down that road. No, they're gonna be fundraising for again, a lot of them, right, so.
It is being fun, I, I, I asked about the fundraising, they said they're in process, but I don't know how they're doing.
Yeah, I don't think they're going public yet, I think, yeah.
Okay, so next, so the other question, somebody alluded to this. Is whether or not this would be able to become to us, to it with us, to a spring town meeting. It's my opinion that that's gonna be a hard, a, a, a tough push.
So some of the six different things three months ago.
Well, don't forget, we, I thought of this tonight, we have the stupid um driveway thing. We're gonna need to explain, which we've sort of. Haven't finalized, we've added around, we've now said hotels, which seem simple. And I think we can, we can kind of, um, and I think um. We might use the opportunities to introduce senior housing, I think they should use meeting time to. Do the work of hashing through the draft bylaw and that has taken us months on downtown. Which seemed like I thought was gonna be the simplest thing ever. So I think we should. Chuck away on it, the, um, but the warrant, you know, we gotta have a public hearing on it by like March first. So, let's um, let's devote some specific time to talk about this at our next meeting unless something else comes up.
I think we should dedicate it to Chris too.
Does that work for people?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, great. Thank you, Chris, that was, thank you for keeping us pushing along, I appreciate it. Okay, um. I know ours sixteen point person wants to. Has some time commitments, but uh other matters or liaise on reports?
I have one that's worth mentioning, so the ZBA means next week. Next week, on my week, Sarah. Eighteenth or nineteenth, whenever that is. And um, I think it's worth tuning into on the ADU issue because. I mean, I, I don't have all the details on the tip of my tongue, but it's a situation. That I don't think we anticipated.
Of course.
And so we might want to think about, are there things we can do to fix the situation in the spring? Um, and what's happened is the property that is. Uh, before the ZBA is in the general district. And recall that with.
I thought it was D, it did.
It's in the D district.
I thought it was in G, it's in D. Sorry, okay. Uh, well, Mark, you know the details better, so you go ahead.
Uh, well, it's in the D one district and they're proposing a detached ADU. And when we wrote the bylaw, we envisioned that if someone wanted to. Of course, do a nine hundred square foot detached can, and so that's permitted. But if they wanted to do a larger detached ADU between nine and twelve hundred. That they really, because we allow, it's a very small district and we allow to families in that district. That they should build it as a two-family, to kind of in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, so. And not have two separate really houses on the property, so. This is slightly over. Um, I think it's a hundred and eighty-two square feet, eighty-six square feet over nine hundred. So it'd be just over a thousand square feet, um, so they're seeking a variance. Uh, from the zoning board for um, for the use, so um. That's.
So it would have to.
So part of the problem is also the structure that they tore down. Was like a former school building, preschool building. And so we're changing the use. I'm sure at the time that was allowed, but so to an ADU and. Their plan is bigger than the nine hundred. Um, so it's kind of messy and I just think it's worth tuning in. To understand the issues um and see how the ZBA dealt with it. But Sarah Malish has consulted with town council on it, get a little bit of that, anyway, I think.
What's the address, can you?
Yeah, I'll say what these.
I don't remember.
Yeah, address?
Um, I don't recall. The posting is um, is in the newspaper, so.
Okay, and the. But I think the question, the issue is that if the two-family has to be a single building. Where they have to be connected as a single building and if it's a um ADU, isn't it? You know, they, I guess it's for the in-laws or the, but whatever, it doesn't really matter what the use is, because that's only what the use is today when we build it. So they're, um, the, the two-family would require that they connect them, that they be one building. And that an ADU can be a separate building. And so to Mark's point, I think we anticipate, we deliberately said these larger ADUs cannot be in that district. Because you have the benefit of a two-family already and the benefit of a nine hundred. Right, and also if you have a two-family, you can actually add in on nine hundred.
Right.
ADU in addition and basically get a free, three residents on that property. So um, there are. And it's a larger than standard lot, um, it's a, it has, it's a larger lot, but apparently. So, um, thank you, that's.
And then the second thing, sorry, also on the agenda with the ZBA is that cargo. So um, in case that comes back to us.
Must see ZBA.
Must see ZBA.
Okay, excellent, um, any other?
Got one more, very briefly about what's happening in the uh. On the facilities committee, we, things like these. EDP, uh, DPW is focusing in on the School Street site for all three. DPW, who uh police and fire somehow situated that site. I met with them today, you know, I said I need a little sidebar with you. So we took out the sketch paper and drew what they're doing. First I had, initially I had, didn't think it would ever work. But uh, with a little bit of planning, it actually might work, it's gonna be an extensive redo of that whole, that whole length of corridor. From one twenty-eight down to um, the access road to uh, what's the face, to the Mac.
That water.
Yeah, it's gonna be a little that water out. But I guess the point of all this thing, not that that's a particular problem for us here, no matter what, it's gonna free up.
Yeah.
Re-up Plaza Street for used to be whatever.
And fire station.
Uh, fire station, well, we're done there, that was, that's gonna go up, but School Street.
Yeah, right, but that'll be available too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the fire station is a little bit difficult one, I actually suggested one of the police department, move into the vacated fire department. Put a second floor in there, reuse the whole thing, don't use the flooded area, but. You know, that's, they, they want to stay together, police and fire want to be together and there may be a way to do it. So that's proceeding ahead to actually fit plans now. Yeah, we're not sure, we're not, I'm, I'm not sure, we're, they're meeting with an engineer and they're, they're using the facilities group to. Give their blessing as to whether it should go further or how father go, but right now is purely, it's purely looks like that. Matter of fact, that, that is actually it. Brewster plans?
We have, um, thank you. Minutes, um, I was. Meeting, so, I have a motion to uh. Remove the minutes of October twenty-seventh.
So moved.
Any other discussion? Um, all in favor? Um, I abstain. Okay, anything else?
Well, that's right, you were here for that one.
Next Monday at four thirty, if you can.
Thanks, Mark. So I can see that dark in there, Mark.
Yes, there's only one, one light, it's not very bright.
You ever see, you see Netflix story and the Ed Gin story?
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
On Netflix. We're talking about Netflix, hold on, it's just getting, and the Ed Gin, it's, it's.